Good evening, everybody. Right now it's 7:03. And I've called to order the board meeting of November 18th, 2014. And somebody please call the room.
Marcio?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
The rabbit?
Here.
Carl? Wendy?
Here.
John?
Here.
Do we have a call?
Dog.
You call dog. Dog. What accent?
Okay, we have a call.
We have a call.
The first item in the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the previous meetings. Can you hear me now?
No.
How do I know? Okay, the first item in the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the October 28 regular board meeting minutes.
I second that. Any objections?
Who made the second?
No objections? Okay, they approved. Okay, the next item in the agenda is the president's message. Yesterday. Good evening. As you all know, next week is Thanksgiving. And I'm very happy to say that we have a lot to be thankful for as a community this year. Despite many challenges, we have done more with less than any board in a very long time. Not only have we continued to keep a place looking beautiful, but by operating more efficiently, we have managed to save enough money to resume the long-delayed renovations of our buildings without a special assessment. All in the midst of a 40-year certification. And what more, we expect to still have enough money left over to give some of it back to the unit owners in the form of a modest maintenance fee reduction. Because of the need to include the building renovations in next year's budget, the reductions won't be as big as we would like. But I believe it would be the first time in International Village history that you, the unit owners, will actually see your maintenance fees go down instead of up. And I think that's definitely something to be thankful for. Another big reason to be thankful this Thanksgiving is the fact that we expect very soon to formally sign an agreement with Wells Fargo for an 18-month extension of our loan loan with the option of an additional six months' extension after that. This is a very big deal that not only shows Wells Fargo continued commitment to International Villages, but also gives us the opportunity to keep strengthening our financial position as we look to refinance the loan in the next year or two. Finally, I would like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving and let you know that as your president, I am extremely thankful for the opportunity to continue serving you, the unit owners of this great community. Once again, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the treasures report.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My treasures report for this month is as follows. For the month of Octo... Sorry, yes, for the month of October, we have, uh... We are under budget $14,322.42. Year-to-date, as of October 31st, we are under budget $59,000... Um, I'm sorry, I'm just payroll, excuse me. We're under budget on payroll, $14,000 for the month of October. Uh, we're under budget on payroll for the year-to-date, $59,600. Uh, maintenance, we're under budget on maintenance for the month of October by $2,000. For the year, we're under budget on maintenance by $63,146... Sorry, $63,146. And for, um, on general and administrative expenses, for the month of October, we're under budget by $6,600. For the year, again, on general and administrative expenses, we're under budget $57,000. And for the year, we're now under budget for all expenses by $287,952.24. And that is my treasures report.
Thank you, John. $280,000 so far.
I have a question. Where is the rest of the expenses here? Like legal expenses and all the stuff that are included in this budget or in this report? Can somebody answer that? Because as my understanding, the legal fees right now are the highest that we ever have. So I don't understand how we're saving so much money. And the other thing is that according to the proposed budget, the only thing that we're saving is maybe a couple of bucks. If we are saving so many thousands of dollars every month, how come the budget doesn't reflect that? Can you answer the question?
Are you completely blind? I mean, what do you mean it doesn't reflect that?
Well, from my calculation, the new maintenance fee will be reduced for maybe $5. And how come we're saving so many thousands of dollars and then our new maintenance fee will be only a couple of bucks? I was expecting to see at least what we were paying the year before with so many thousands of dollars being reduced. Or being saved, supposedly.
That's because we are renovating buildings. We are doing 40-year certification.
What do we call a renovation?
You ask me a question, I'm answering.
Yes, I want to know the detail when you refer to as renovations.
Okay. So not only we managed to lower the maintenance, but we're renovating the buildings, we're completing the 40-year certification, and getting the Wells Fargo loan redone.
Okay, how much are we reducing by? What is the big difference on the new maintenance?
It's right in front of you, Andy, you have it.
I know, it's only not even 1%. Supposedly, we were going to reduce the maintenance to what it was at least last year because everybody complained AMG created this blow-up budget that didn't make any sense and we want to get it back. And now we're saving so much money, now the AMG is not here, and we don't see the difference. So it's kind of contradictory.
Oh, I forgot to mention something.
If you don't see the difference, you have to look into your eyes.
I don't see the difference.
There's a huge difference.
Yeah, and where? And can you give me the definition of renovation of the buildings?
Oh, Marcio, I forgot to mention something on my treasures report. And that is that regarding the maintenance fee reduction that Marcio mentioned, we have a budget meeting where we'll actually be voting on that. And I believe that the date is set for... Do we have a date yet? This... What day of the week is that? I think Tuesday is the 8th, so could you check that? Just give us a moment.
How much were the legal fees this year, may I ask?
That's I wonder, because I don't know.
Can I ask you that question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Tuesday, Tuesday.
I don't have it in front of me.
It's the 8th is Tuesday.
It's not be in your list.
Nine, nine.
Okay, the 9th. It'll be December the 9th.
When John mentioned that we are $280,000.
That's not what I asked. Please tell me.
Positive. That includes everything.
I know that, but tell me how much of that is legal expense? It should be right in front of you.
It's not.
It's not?
This is something that not even I am allowed to see, I don't know. And so much transparency that is being talked about, I am not allowed to see any of that.
Excuse me, you're not the president. Um, just to... I think Marcio pretty clearly explained that we are going to... We've begun the building renovations. It's a very large expense. The previous board wanted to do it by special assessment. That we did not feel that would be fair because the first five buildings were not done with a special assessment. It was done with, uh, out of the operating budget. Therefore, we will be doing the remaining buildings also in that same fashion. Uh, that's why we don't have, um, you know, the luxury of giving back 10 or 20% reduction in maintenance because a lot of, a lot of that, um, what we would have liked to do, to have cut back on maintenance, we have a big expense that we have to cover this year, it's a one-year expense. Excuse me, I have the floor.
I don't care, you already were interrupting. We had an assessment last year.
Well, I have the answer for your legal fees.
Thank you.
David brought me the...
How much are they through this year?
The actual legal fees, I should own that, David.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. All right, in answer to your question, this is as of October, this is your financial, okay? The actual so far in legal fees that has been spent is $31,607. You were anticipated to spend, year-to-date, $32,750. So we're under, okay, your budget.
That's...
No, 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 that's for this point in time. For the year, you were budgeted $39,000. It's right there in your financial, Wendy.
Yes.
Okay, so...
That's financial, those immediate.
What do you mean those immediate? There's an accounting of 10 months for...
I'm sorry, but I know, that might be what we spend in a month.
All right, that's enough.
And can you tell me what is the renovation that we're doing in the meeting? I asked you that question before.
All right, Wendy, that's enough.
No, renovation, painting, and change the carpet is not renovation. Renovation is going and replace...
Okay.
Renovation is fixing the pipes and electricity, not just painting.
The next item on the agenda is the management report. David, for me, please.
Again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, some of the things on my management report that I want to bring to your attention is that the engineer has completed the 40-year inspection on the following four buildings: St. Moritz, the Interlochen, the Heilberg, and the Otto Weiss. Maintenance has ordered the materials and is currently in the process of correcting the problems that were found with the electrical and roof deficiencies noticed in that inspection. So George and his crew are currently fabricating some material to correct the discrepancies. Armored Protection installed the new fire panel in the Zurich building, which was replaced due to a damage, uh, due to damage from the lightning strike. Uh, this information has already been sent to your insurance company to recover the costs. Uh, Armored Protection and the City of Lauderdale Fire Department have concluded their final inspection of the Grenoble Building Smoke Long installation. Paradise Pools was contacted to repair a broken gutter line in the outdoor pool by removing the pavers and breaking through the concrete depth to make the repair. Aqua Cow was contacted to repair the heater for the outdoor spa. The compressor was replaced under warranty, but the association will have to be responsible for the expense for the labor. And Todd Naproofing, uh, was contacted to repair a leak above the T-shop. This was completed under the existing roof warranty and didn't cost the association anything. Also, Maintenance has completed working on a Nottingham roof by installing a three-part epoxy waterproof coating to the existing roof above units N3J, N3K, and N3L. So far with the rain, it's held, so we're looking pretty good there. Let's keep our fingers crossed. Uh, in addition, Maintenance has inspected, cleaned, and cleared the roofs, scuffers, and downspouts of all debris on the roofs of the buildings. Last week, Maintenance had saw cut and removed sections of the roadway by the end of the Yorkshire building to repair a main break in the irrigation system. And Maintenance has begun the renovation of the Orleans building by removing the wallpaper, prepping and preparing the walls, doors, and trim for painting. New light fixtures and carpeting will be purchased and installed, and new tile will be installed in the lobby and in front of and behind the elevators on each floor. Just some legal issues. Management had received notification from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development that a complaint had been filed against the association by a unit owner for the failure of the association to allow him to walk his dog on property. All of the pertinent information was referred to the association's attorney for them to answer. I have been in contact with them. I have sent them all the relevant information, all the documentation necessary to defend the association. Under financial, the owner of unit H3B has asked to enter into a payment plan with the association. Uh, she is currently paying Alliance and only fell behind in her maintenance due to her medical condition. Uh, please see the attached letter in your folder. Uh, also, last thing is that we have received the Broward County Ad-Larren taxes for the following units. These have to be paid by December 1st at these amounts. Uh, B2V, O1H, Z2L, Z3B, and Z3E. These are all units that the association has titled to. And that's it, any questions?
Thank you, David.
I have a clarifying question. On the four buildings that we've gotten the 40-year recertification, you mentioned that there's some electrical work that needs to be done, and you said our maintenance people are going to be doing it. Does that mean that the city accepts non-licensed contractors to take care of electrical work?
It's not actual electrical work. Basically, what it is, is that the covers on the, um...
If I really understand correctly, just replacing little cap, just the...
On boxes, the covers on the AC disconnects.
Okay.
All right, a lot of them are rotted out.
There's no live wire involved with this?
No, no, this is just replacing the covers. So we wanted the material to stamp it out so we can, you know, redo the disconnects. That's all. No, we don't do actual electrical work. Any other questions?
All right, David, I guess we need to make a motion to approve the payment plan.
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion as presented.
I second that motion.
What was the motion again?
To accept the payment plan from our four-unit H3B.
H3B?
Yes. Marcio, are you seconding?
I'm seconding. Any discussion on the board? Okay, Hayden.
It's going to take about seven and a half years for the resident to pay this off. It's, uh, it's a pretty long time. I was wondering whether we would want to consider probably an alternative to that. I don't know.
The way that I look at it, Hayden, is that you're absolutely right. It is about six or seven years. But remember that as soon as we accept this, next month, they are already making a payment, which right now we're not getting anything. So that way, we start getting the regular maintenance, and whatever they send on top of it is to catch up what's in the rears. So to catch up what's behind will take that long. But as of tomorrow, I mean, not tomorrow, but the next payment, they are current. I mean, we're receiving monies from that unit immediately.
There's sort of been a concession on the total amount being financed, really, I guess. In other words, they're in the rear of a certain amount of money, and they want seven years to pay it back. Correct?
I don't think it's written exactly, seven years to pay it back, it's actually 100 or 200 bucks.
We're giving them a concession time-wise, but they're not making, but we're not giving them a concession on the total amount of...
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still going to collect everything.
We're going to get it all, but we're making it, uh, making a concession on the amount. We're making a concession on the time.
And even better, we start getting the regular maintenance immediately.
And that's an interest-free.
This is going to ask if they're going to be charged interest.
I think it's still on the board, I don't know if it is on the floor yet.
Wait, you're finished, I have a question. Still with the board?
Yes, yeah, sorry, guys.
Okay, thanks.
David, um, assuming we approve this tonight and they fall behind, what then are our remedies as an association?
Well, again, with anything, if they fall behind, then you're in default of their agreement, and it would go to the attorney. Yeah, that's, you know, lots of choice.
Any more discussions on the board?
When was this letter sent out? The lady requesting the payment plan?
We received it yesterday.
You received it yesterday?
Yeah.
She sent it just to you, was it an email or a letter?
The way you see it, the way you have received it.
Does it not include where she lives or what's the unit on here? What's the...
All right, um... Do we bring it to the floor for a question on this?
Yeah.
David, how much you say is sold by this unit?
Um, offhand, I'm not positive, and I don't want to... It's, uh, I don't, offhand, I don't know. All I know is the terms that she had requested.
How many years that they lived there and not pay anything?
Marvin?
Yeah, are you approving a payment plan on an amount that's not written down? You don't know?
No, it's in the records. It's on the delinquency.
Okay, it seems like it should be, you should be voting on a payment.
I think the, I think the motion is to approve the payment plan as written. As, I believe there is a payment plan agreement.
We know what's written.
Yeah, you should have it.
No, I don't even know neither, I don't know.
You should have it, and we have a right to have it. And you're voting on something that you don't have. You don't know what you're voting on.
Yes, you do.
You don't know what you're voting on.
That's what Bible says.
You can just pay it.
How much is the figure?
You're the board man, it's your job to know what you're voting on, you're the president.
This is not a job, Marvin, this is not a job.
Marcio, the actual balance on the account is $18,067.
How much?
$18,000.
What side of the apartment is it?
It's a B, it's a one-bedroom.
I recommend you put in the motion the terms of the agreement.
That's about five years.
The amount, the number of years, and the payments per month.
How could somebody live there for five years and not pay anything? And if they miss a payment, you're going to date your lawyer.
You want to vote for all? Well, no, this person is already at Alliance. Okay, they've been at Alliance.
Is Alliance record here somewhere?
No.
It should have been included.
No.
Bueno.
They terminated Alliance.
I want to clarify the, um, I'm going to clarify my motion to specifically, what they're proposing is to pay an extra $100 a month. That's clarification, so do you want to say?
Yeah, I second that, that's fine.
$100 a month to pay off $18,000. That's 1,200 a year, so you're looking at 15 years.
You said seven and a half or eight, if you're not mistaken.
So you're approving a 15-year agreement?
That's crazy.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Wow, that gentleman just said seven and a half.
What if they go short and you have nothing, nothing at all?
It's 100 to 200.
Then for you? It's better for you to have something.
Uh, Mr. President, probably it would be good for the members to understand that this applicant has cancer, and this applicant has been without medical insurance, and the alternative is to throw this applicant out in the street. Probably they need to understand that.
And I'm sure that some of you back there would love to buy the unit, you know, and kick somebody out in the street.
No, but your figure is a lot.
We are trying to help people with their house.
$200 a month, make your figures correct so we can listen and be correct. You're not correct.
Well...
I'm okay with 100.
He said 100, seven and a half years, that's 84,000, 8,400.
Well, the point, the point is that the unit owner would immediately start making the payments. So you get the base maintenance fee, which whatever it is, 300, 200, 400.
It's going to take you 15 years, not seven and a half years, like that gentleman said.
Is she pays, she's asking to make payments on 100 to 200. If she pays $200 a month?
That's what somebody said, they said 100.
That's what he says, yeah, they didn't include that.
I don't have that piece of evidence.
Neither, I just seen it, I just, I just thought.
Bottom line is, you could, this is, this is your vote. You can approve whatever you want, but just make the motion so everybody knows what you're agreeing to.
I do, I do have a question, though.
We can make the motion exactly.
There are other accounts.
100 or 200.
Excuse me, there are other accounts also. Are we going to have payment plans for other people?
On a case-by-case.
On a case-by-case, based on...
Case-by-case, that's what he means, Wendy.
Is this the first case?
So the only reason is because she had cancer, that we are giving her that concession.
So what was that for?
How do you know?
Stage four.
But at least she has a home to stay in while she, for as long as she lives.
So it's a compassionate thing. Yeah, come on.
Any International Village gets the maintenance right away instead of zero.
We'll state what it is so that we have it on paper.
So, you know, when the, when the numbers don't reconcile and all of this, and vote on numbers that don't reconcile, it doesn't inspire confidence among the membership. That's really the only point. That's the only point.
Let me put it this way, I hope it never happens to you, but if you have stage four cancer, okay, and you're about to get kicked out of your house.
No, 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 that's not the point, I just...
Why don't you tell us just at the beginning?
We got to say what we're saying, state what you're talking about.
It's the point, when the numbers aren't reconciling and you're going to make judgment on it on our behalf, I'd like to see that the numbers are straight, that everything reconciles, every number is in place, Ts crossed, Is dotted, because you're voting for me.
I think it's going to be another poll.
I don't think I'm asking too much. If it's a compassionate thing...
What would be the other option? The other option would be don't prove it and get zero.
No, mover is not the mover.
You're missing the point, what we're asking is to give us accurate numbers. You can prove it, but just give us accurate numbers.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, basically...
Not rent this and not charge us. If you want to be compassionate, put her in a apartment that we own.
All right, so do we have a...
There's a motion on the floor to accept the terms that she had presented.
Correct.
She will pay $100 to $200 extra per month on top of her regular maintenance fee.
All right, call the room, please.
It's a minimum of 100.
All right, call the room, please.
To 100 or 200?
As written, Wendy.
But we need to decide what the payment power is.
You say, why don't you give it between 1 and 2?
Yeah.
It cannot be less than 1 or 2.
Excuse me, gentlemen.
You can't adjust to the profit.
They have to go to your lawyer to tell you what to say.
Yes.
Are there any objections?
Yeah, Carl, can you call the room, please?
That's a little bit specific, that's my question. Do we need to specify?
Marcio.
Yes.
Hayden. Rabbit.
Yes.
Carl, yes. Wendy.